Open the meeting to the public. Dave?
Is that me?
Yep. And anyone else from the public?
I'll start it.
Sure.
Okay. Got a lot of stuff to do, you know. So, it's exciting stuff and been looking forward to getting here. Thanks for having me. And so, let's get to it. So, to first to start, I wanted to give an update on the group, the Two CRSI group. That's our anchor, that's our first great tenant. We're super excited with the way things have been progressing with them. As you guys can see, a lot of activity there. Going through the site, you know, it was really very, very much of a vast, but they're getting through it, they're, you know, just doing the assessment of everything that's mistaken out, yeah.
Just, I don't want to interrupt you.
Sure.
Could you just tell everybody your name, because we have new people here.
I'm sorry.
And who you are.
My name's David Groetz and I'm one of the partners at ERS Investments. And we have purchased a while back the old Pfizer site and we tore most of it down, kept a couple of great buildings, and we're trying now to get new companies to come into Ralph's Point and really make a difference to the village. So, we have an additional tenant that we're very excited about. They're out of France, they're called Two CRSI. And they do a lot of high-tech manufacturing of computer servers, equipment, they operate data centers. And they are in the process of making Ralph's Point their U.S. headquarters. So, I wanted to start and just give you a little update, bit of update on them. They have been very successful in the past year. And it's exciting to us because with them coming to the U.S., Ralph's Point being their spot that they've picked, I just feel really fortunate because there's a lot of notoriety that's coming with these guys. And when we first started, I really believed that if we could get someone of this caliber of company, other people would follow. And that's what's really planned out and what I want to share with you a lot of that tonight. They said, they put out a company outlook to the shareholders. The Two CRSI is seeing continued continuation of positive sales momentum observed in the second half of 2020, 2021 is going forward with its investments for future growth, both increasing the group's production capacity and strengthening the offering of greedy computing power and the group's presence in the United States. So, that's their mission statement. Their movement to the U.S. is up front and center. So, you know, we're really excited about it. And, you know, to anybody that isn't really familiar with the data center space, they do a lot of things, but the data center, the data center space is what it sounds like. It's data coming in, data going out. Data coming in and maybe being redirected. So, for example, if they have, which they do, a trading firm as one of their clients, the trade would maybe come from New York City into here, into the facility around Ralph's Point, and then would then travel out maybe to California to the person that actually put the trade in. So, the space is important because of all firms, all companies have some form of a data center that helps them run their business daily. It keeps them, you know, all of their executives and employees, they go into the data center to get the information that they need to do their jobs. And there's like seven million data centers in the world, right? So, they're not unique, but they're a very necessary part of business. And what they've done, they're so, this group is so forward-thinking that they're getting a lot of international accolades and recognition that I thought I would share some of them just to show you the quality of the tenant that we're relying on to start the redevelopment. Now, they're not, they're not all of it. I mean, they're just the start. This is just the first firm that's coming here that I think, and I think I can show you tonight, of what's going to follow behind that, you know, once we get the seed planted. So, for, just for example, Two CRSI and BNP Paribas have teamed up for energy efficiency and carbon footprint reduction. The bank, which is, this is the largest bank in the world outside of China, is BNP Paribas. They're gigantic. But the bank has invested with Two CRSI for new, more efficient Two CRSI server solutions that recycle heat generated by the servers. So, this bank has chosen R2 CRSI to redo all of the servers because of their technology is so far advanced, which is pretty cool. Two CRSI announces it has been selected by the European High Commission to contribute to design and building a European sovereign high-performance computing solution. This is for all of Europe they've been picked. They have joined with a group called SubAR, S-U-B-M-E-R, and presented the partnership to save, and their joint solution to revolutionize the world of IT when it comes to energy savings for data centers. They have gotten awarded a contract in the oil and gas sector to design and manufacture high-performance, energy-efficient IT server solutions. The customer is a global geoscience technology leader who requires proprietary advanced technology. And it goes, it just goes on and on. They're partners with Intel, AMD, Nvidia, Western Digital, and Samsung are just a few of them. So, I just want to impress upon you guys that this is, this is who we wanted. This is who, this is who we wanted to get here to really, to really be the economic driver of what we want to do with the site. And they're coming and they're excited to be in Ralph's Point. And I'm really excited to have them here. Now, a couple of things that, like the newspaper article just came out. This is an example of what happens when you have, when you have a leader in a field and then they start having conversations with other types of firms in the technology space. You know, things happen. They, when really smart people get together, they come up with some really smart stuff, right? You know, way beyond what I can imagine, but, you know, as a landlord, that's who I want in my building. You know, I want those kinds of people in there because that generates jobs and it generates, you know, high-paying jobs, good jobs, and sustainable jobs, you know, companies that are going to be successful for a long time. I mean, that's what we look for, you know, when we're looking for the right groups to come here. So, this RNP, RPNY is an example of that. This is a, this is a group of investors that are in the technology space. They got together with Two CRSI and they came up with, and they had invested in these trailers. Now, the trailer, it's a data-centered trailer and it's, it's big. It's, you know, 40 feet by 40 feet by 20 feet. And they're going to manufacture them here. Okay, they're going to start it. I think they have maybe four orders, but these, the orders are going to go from 48 to 16 because the trailer, the trailer is a mobile data center. So, Two CRSI will make the servers and this group is going to put them into a one-megawatt trailer that is then eventually going to be tested, you know, for a specific client and then it will be put on a semi and then it's going to be taken to wherever, Iowa or Nebraska, or whoever has a specific use for this type of technology, they're just going to ship them out the door. So, for us, it's great because it's manufacturing. So, manufacturing means people and expansion and buildings and more trailers. So, they're coming. They've signed, they've signed the lease, they're going to start as soon as the building's ready, they'll start moving stuff in. One, one thing I wanted to mention, I, the Two CRSI has apologized for not properly handling the permit for the louvers on the side of the building. So, John, they've assured me this week that you'll get the proper paperwork.
You said that, and I'm glad to hear that because, you know, we inquired about it before and no answer, so.
Yeah.
And the people up there are not familiar with what's going on anyway, so.
Yeah, and they should have done a better job. I wasn't aware of it, that it was going to happen, so it'll be, it'll be taken care of. And to that end, more good news that I think you'll find interesting. I don't know if anybody knows who Harry A. Chuthan is. I don't know if that name rings a bell. Harry is another very smart person. He is a CEO and the owner of Convolt Energy. And he has, he actually has a few different companies, but Harry is now on board with our project and he's been on-site for the last few days. And he is, he's on the team. But what's interesting about, about Harry, why I think that we're going to be very happy to have him, you know, involved with us and you guys will, he is, he has started a solar, he does solar panels is one of the things he does. And he is, he is, he is building a plant in Watertown, New York. And what's interesting about this is the, I'll just give you a quote from David Zembeek, who's the Jefferson County Economic Development CEO. "Harry is transformational for the county and the region." He's, he's gonna, his energy plans in Watertown, he's starting with 20,000 square feet and is going to employ 165 people. But he is forecasting plans to expand to 500,000 square feet and 525 people within five years. He's the founder and chairman and CEO of ACO Investment Group, which is Convolt Energy's parent company. ACO is an investment, is an alternative investment manager and a private equity firm that focuses on investing in the energy, power, information technology, e-commerce, telecommunications, transportation, and logistics sectors. North Country Public Radio says Jefferson County is on to one of the biggest job creation projects in the North Country in decades. So, you know, that's, that's big. And Harry's involved, Harry wanted to come tonight. I told him that I would certainly welcome to him to come in the next meeting so he can introduce himself to you guys. But he will be taking over the project for the Two CRSI side, fishing off the stuff that you do. So, he will be in charge of the permitting and making sure that everything's done, all the permits are filed on time, anything that needs to be done will be done. So, he'll be coming in to see you guys, to meet you, to the board, so you guys, you know, will get to know him because, you know, Poison retired, right? So, he was, John was our guy, we all loved John because he was so buttoned up. So, as you probably know, it's been difficult with the high-skill trades or you can't even be an electrician, right? So, Harry's here, he's bringing his own crew, he's gonna, he's gonna come in and talk to you guys. He's very, very well-respected in the community. So, you guys can certainly get a hold of the folks at Watertown and, you know, inquire about him if you want. Let me give you his last name. First name's Harry, H-A-R-I, last name is A-C-H-U-T-H-A-N. So, I encourage you to look him up. You'll see the quality of the guy that is going to be very involved with us moving forward. So, the next thing I wanted to talk about, so that, oh, okay, a couple other things which are interesting, which kind of follow in the vein of the, the economic driver of Two CRSI, bringing other people to the, attracting other people to the village. We're actually in discussions with a microchip manufacturing company. They're interested in Ralph's Point. We're down to four people, they're considering four places. We're in the running because, and we were on the phone with them today, they would love to be next door to Two CRSI. And that's why they're considering us. But if that, if that were to happen, it would be, I mean, it would be, it would be national news. So, it's still, it's still going to be a tough thing for us to get them here, but we're in the, we're down to the final four, so that's pretty cool. We're also, we're very interested in the warehousing. Thursday, we have a group coming up that I don't want to tell you who it is yet, they haven't given me permission to release their name, but you'll know them. They want 60,000 square feet and there are probably the 25 to 30 employees coming with them. That would be a pretty immediate, that would be a pretty immediate thing. Obviously, the warehouse is based up there as great, so in the long hand. And they do manufacturing too, so it would be, it would be a combination of some manufacturing, which, you know, really starts to round out, you know, the tenant base because, you know, obviously, we don't want to be in one industry, you know, we don't want a Pfizer giant to leave us again, leave us with nothing, right, basically? So, we're really trying to get a variety of industry, good companies, sustainable, long-term growth projections that make sense, that, you know, if something happened to one of them, it's not devastating to us, right? So, so those are, those are a couple other firms that are, were in process that seem to be pretty, you know, pretty close to being to decision point at least, right? So, the next thing I was going to talk to you about is the power. You know, we have done, I know that our send's been very helpful. Susan, we're going to miss you wherever you are. She was very, very helpful to us. And we gathered thousands of pages of information on the power and spent thousands of dollars, frankly, to put this together with a power expert. And he, he went through, you know, we had a little confusion the last time we talked about power. So, you know, we wanted to do this because we just want to, we want to have really, really super good data. We want to know where we're going, we want to know what kind of different things we can get. We want, we want more, we want more hydropower. We know we can get more hydropower. What does that mean for us if we get more hydropower? So, we did, you know, we went to the, we went to the, of course, we did five years of bills from NIPA, from DIPA. We did all the purchase power statements, we did all the recent billing history of the site. We went through the tariffs, we went through the NIPA agreements with a fine-tooth comb, we went through the DIPA agreements with a fine-tooth comb. And we developed a, you know, we developed a model. And we have a whole bunch of different suggestions of things that we might be able to do as a group, or you guys can do. You have access to all of our information and all of our data. And the guy, J.B. Sauer, who actually put this together, he's out of Houston, he's available to us, he'll fly up here if we want to have this conversation, we can do it in any kind of setting that you want to do it in. But he knows, he really, really knows the power. He knows the agreements, you know, the DIPA agreement. He's got, he's got, you know, strong feelings on that agreement by itself. Is it a good agreement for the village or is it not a good agreement? Could we do better than that if we wanted to go out and talk about something like that? It's, it's maybe something that you want to consider, would it? But he has a lot of great opinions on the power and he's certainly available to us. You know, he knows obviously way more than I do, but we do have him available. But just as a, I just wanted to mention one thing on the rate tables of our conclusions on the research. So, for residential, for the residential customer, if we go from where we are today and we draw five megawatts at the site up at Ralph's Point, the ratepayer price will go up .004 kilowatts. That's a quarter of a penny at five megawatts. If you go to 10 megawatts, it goes to a half of a penny kilowatt. So, it's not, it's not a lot, right? Certainly, if you do a comparison to what the, what the rates were when Pfizer was running, it's pennies, right? But what's interesting is if we get, if we get the, if we get an additional five megawatts of hydropower, right, because of our work here, when we go to five megawatts, it goes up zero. If we go to 10 megawatts, it goes to, again, a 40% of a penny, less than, less than a half a cent, right? So, I have this, this graph, just so maybe you can, just to help show you, this, this is, this is at five megawatts. Okay, so you can see the blue is hydro, right? And then you dip into the supplemental power at certain times of the year. But this is still, I mean, this is still pennies, but it shows you, you know, what happens when you go to five megawatts, right? But if you take this, this is at 10 megawatts. You see, they're almost identical. But I'm using twice as much power, but now on this graph, I have gotten our additional five megawatts of hydropower. So, it gives you a visual of why we need to work together to get it, right? We've talked to them, it's there, they've offered it, and they've sent us the application to fill it out. So, we just have to, you know, it's a tenant-based thing, so we have to, right, it's a tenant, and so we have to get the tenant to block. We get it at five megawatts. It is not, it's not the end of the road. I mean, we have the ability, once we start showing progress at the site, you know, we have really good, we have really good support from Gary Douglas. As you know, Gary's got really good support in Albany, in Washington, D.C. He's there for us, so we can, as a group, we could, we could really go after if we try to get more hydropower allocation based on the progress that we're making on-site. So, that's my comments on the power and that's kind of the end of my update. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them for you.
Any timeline?
Timeline is, timeline is, is quick. I mean, we're, we're making progress quick and I would expect they're making plans to bring in infrastructure and all of the stuff we need to turn the lights on and start the customers coming. I'd say by the end of the year, we should have significant progress. By the end of the year and early next year, it's just going to, it's going to magnify. I would suspect that we'll start, we'll be building trailers first quarter, probably be building, shipping them out first quarter, is my guess. But that's, that's a great question. I'll, I'll try to get, maybe I can get a little bit, you know, more detail on timelines and send it to you in the email.
Okay.
Can you email us the conclusion of the research for the power?
Yes, I can do that. We have to do that.
And say if you use five or 10 megawatts, how many jobs would that be roughly if we get to that point?
I'd say that you're probably looking at, you're probably looking at over 40 jobs. You're probably at 40 jobs, I'd say. Maybe, maybe 60 jobs, somewhere in there.
Would this just be one tenant? Or is it like different tenants having 60 jobs each?
Oh, it's everybody. It's everybody. It's all the tenants, you know. See, so we started building the trailers, if the trailers increase from two to four, you're probably going from 10 to 15 jobs to 20 jobs, you know. Any of the, any of these businesses with a, with a successful rollout, it's, you're doubling jobs every time you're, every expansion, you're going to be doubling jobs.
That's not going to be a lot of footprint in terms of space for each one?
As far as the...
Would they, would they all fit in the same building?
Yeah. Yeah, now, now, we do, we do have, you know, if we need to expand quickly, we have investigated, the General Steel's got a really nice steel building. We were ready on that whole thing if that were to happen and we had to move, we had to expand quickly, we get that done.
I'm kind of wondering how you feed 10 megawatts into that one building?
That's, that's a good question. That's a little above my pay grade, but I can, I can get to the, I can get you the schematics of how it's going to work. It's not, it's not as hard as you think, I don't think.
Probably not.
Yeah.
How's the, how's it going with Two CRSI moving in?
They're, they were here last week, so they're, they're making plans to, to move quickly, you know, as soon as everything is in order. There's still a lot of stuff in there, right? So, it's...
And they don't make their own chips though?
They don't make the chips, they, they use outside chips and manufacture the server itself.
So, the order of the cases, the chip sets and everything, assemble everything on-site?
Exactly. It's, you know, super high-tech, there, there's going to be cranes that put servers into, they're really known for their ingenuity in being green, right? So, they, they have immersion tanks that things can put in under some kind of special liquid. So, it's really, it's very, very fast and it's very high-tech.
If you did get the chip company, would you have to build a new building for them?
We would, we would immediately start a build, a new build, yeah. About 200,000 square feet. So, we have a, we're kind of on the, on the ready if that were to happen, we would start immediately and it wouldn't be, it's, they go up pretty quick once you have the, once you have the base down. You're, they're shipping, they're shipping metal and engineers and, yeah, so.
Because that chip manufacturing is going to be interesting if they come in here, that's going to be processed.
Yeah, that would be a dream for sure, right there, for sure. It's my vehicle, sorry.
Thank you for checking that out, Sam.
No, it's all going. You did that on purpose.
Now, these steel buildings, would you put them right on the same footprint as what Clive is on? I think so. I think so. The slats are, you know, the slats are so first-class and thick and I think they would probably go right on there.
I'd say you could put it down on there.
That would, that would be sure.
Don't have any questions?
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome. Thanks for giving us the update.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comments? Okay. Minutes of previous meeting. We have two minutes. Any questions or concerns about the minutes of the previous meeting?
I'm making a motion to be accepted as a candidate.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of the special meeting about the electrical system. Any questions or concerns about these minutes?
Make a motion to accept those minutes also?
All in favor? Oh, wait, second. Okay, okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the previous special meeting about the, any air implants for the water treatment plant?
Make a motion to accept them?
Second? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bills. Any additions to the bills or so?
No additions or deletions, just fine.
Any questions?
Make a motion to pay the bills?
I just wanna make a note here real quick. The five seventy for the tire repair, that's, one tire broke one day, because apparently the tube turned inside, and then the, and then the other day, another one broke. They're two separate charges, not one being charged twice. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any correspondence today?
Um, we do have Susan's letter of resignation. I'd like to make a motion that we accept Susan Sullivan's resignation as clerk administrator?
All second, aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would also, I guess I, I can wait till mine, right?
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty twenty-two elections polling place hours. The polling place for the next elections will take place in the House State Hall again. Any questions about the resolution? I make a motion to pass the resolution, roll call vote?
Second?
Uh, trustee Arno?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Okay, the next resolution, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, is to close the Dazney Grant. This stems from the water plant upgrades in twenty seventeen, and some of the money was put into the planning and design for the, for the new water plant we're working on, but we have expended everything in the grant. So I make a motion with this resolution here to close the Dazney Plant Grant?
All second?
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Arno?
Aye.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Okay. New York State Trooper Report, uh, they just sent this to us. To obtain, to obtain a New York State Trooper Report, you can go to troopers.ny.gov. At the bottom of the page is a button, select Press Row, and on the left side, select Troop B, Raybrook. Then in the center, click the date online on the Zone One line. This'll open the blotter report for all the calls in Zone One for that date. You can scroll through to see Rousset Point's calls. If you need more information on a particular call, contact Sergeant Jenkins at five one eight five six three three seven six one. And that way, people can get reports on, at any time. Shamplain EMS contract, did you skip the proposal for recloser setting files? Oh, yes, I did skip that. I know you did on purpose. Oh, no, I just, that's on New York State Trooper's report. So we've got the proposal here for recloser setting files. The laptop and equipment we had was not able to pull the data. So this is the, a proposal that we got to have a company come in and pull the data for us. Was the company recommended through PLM, your firm? Do you not know if that landed?
Can we check with them before we...
Yeah, I was kinda thinking that when I saw this slide, I didn't know if this is someone that they recommended or what. But we would need a second vote also. We're also gonna have to look into replacing that laptop.
Well, I, I don't think it's a problem with a laptop, I think it's the problem with the program that's in the laptop. I mean, I think we're missing the programs for the enclosure.
No, the problem wasn't, the program's on the laptop. The problem, the problem was getting the laptop to communicate with the enclosures. 'Cause we've got the connection, the connection that the old engineer was using, which was a long string of different things plugged into each other.
I can remember that.
So we, we couldn't get it to communicate between the two. So that's a problem that we ran into. But the cobbled-together connection string, whatever the thing that was, and the old laptop barely boots anyway, we're gonna have to look into getting a new laptop and cable connection so we can have a good connection and know it. That thing's still running Windows XP.
Well, isn't that the reason why we consult with PLM?
That's one of the reasons we need to update that system. So I'm gonna contact PLM, make sure that this is someone that they recommended.
Or if they can do it themselves?
Oh, they all can do it. Okay. Shamplain EMS contract. The amount for this year will be one thirty-one, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, which we knew was gonna increase a bit, 'cause we got the free year from them.
Did you have a chance to go through the contract, Tom?
Yeah, I did. I, I noticed like last year's contract, the amount that we paid was ninety-three thousand?
Right.
So it went up to one thirty-one. And it was one of the things that seemed to be different, or that seemed to be added, and you, you know, it's enlightened me. But it did say that there'd be staffing and ALS provider at the Rousset Point Fire Station, which I don't think they did previously.
On the weekends?
No. Yes, we're adding the weekends.
We have a, we had a year free that they gave us because of the billing cycle?
Right.
So now it's catching up to us where we're gonna have to pay if we wanna continue having this service.
Okay. Well, that certainly was the big, the big difference in the two contracts. I mean, generally speaking, the terminology in both contracts are exactly the same, other than obviously the pre-substantial increase in costs, which maybe is justifiable based upon that service, but again, I, I can't tell you that it is or it's not. I mean, I just know that that was the big difference between the two contracts that I looked at, was that one difference, as well as the cost. If, if the value was there for that, then I'd say, oh, then that is probably just applicable. I'm probably not in a position to say that is or is not, but that's, that's the one genuine difference I made. Everything else was pretty much almost exactly the same.
Yeah. For a year, we, we had those people on staff at the fire department for free, and it seemed to have worked out very nicely in making sure that we had full coverage in the village.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's the cost difference.
The question I had is on paragraph three. It'd be on the third page, section B. The language of section B, I, I don't understand where...
Yeah, the, the other contract said nine twenty-eight, three sixty. This one says nine seventy-eight, seven hundred.
So if they collect that, do we get money back? That's my question.
If they collect over nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred, so if they collect, say, nine hundred and ninety...
It does say that.
It does say that, we would...
We get money back. It should, the amount of billing revenue collected during the contract here exceed nine seventy-eight, seven, the excess billing revenue shall be remitted to the village.
Is that, is that clause in the old contract?
Uh, yes. Same, same, same language, except that number was nine, nine twenty-eight, three sixty. And then the same language about villages hereby relieved from the obligation to pay more than the one thirty-one, again, the prior contract was ninety-three.
Right.
But the same language that this, the language is carried over, just the numbers are different.
I hope they don't collect over that, 'cause that means a lot of people had to use it. Pretty expensive, but...
Yeah. Cost of doing business, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the difference really, I guess, is the, the presence here in the village, if that, if that's, if that's a viable number, then, then obviously it makes sense.
That's worked out fairly well.
I'll put this in a formal motion to have the mayor sign the contract, Shamplain EMS?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I request an executive session discussing investigation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I request an executive session to talk about the employment history of a specific employee.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, trustee Arno?
Did you ever talk to Ethan about the mowing the grass behind the, the village property on the lake?
No, I thought, I thought that was gonna be someone else, I thought Ethan.
Okay. Uh, what about the trees on the lake shore? Will be trimmed and stuff like that? Or pulled up this year or next year?
What about the trees behind the village office?
Behind the village office and down by the...
Yeah, 'cause we cut down those earlier this year, and they're just gonna keep growing back 'cause of root systems.
Well, if you pull them out, they don't wanna grow back.
And what are the other trees?
The ones down by the zizivl.
Oh, the zizivl.
On the lake shore.
No, I haven't done, I haven't gotten to talk to anybody about that, I've been busy a couple weeks.
Okay, and John about welding that?
Yes, I have spoken with John about welding the railings.
Railings?
I went out there, took photos, brought them back to him, showed him the, whenever he has time.
Yeah, okay.
And there's, I felt like seven breaks?
Yeah, there was quite a few ahead. Uh, do you want to, I'd like to ask Pat a question on the hometown heroes thing? The poles in the downtown section, are you gonna put the, the flags or the, whatever you wanna call them, flags or...
The banners?
The banners on them poles too?
There's this, a section of downtown that's excluded from the banners, and then it, it's a, a large question mark as to how many applications we'll get. Charlene is going to start advertising the availability of the applications, and the applications will be online at the village office, at the library, and at the Legion, and it kind of depends on what's the demand. Once the demand is identified, then, uh...
Well, the thing with it is, the one, the, the poles in the downtown section, at the business section, they're only thirteen feet high.
Yeah, I do not believe they're going in the downtown section then, but I have to tell you that off the top of my head?
Yeah.
I won't put my hand in the fire. Not sure, but I believe that there is a limitation because of the issue you're mentioning, the kind of historic poles and...
Well, not only that, the, the banners are five foot long, and the poles are only thirteen feet.
Right.
So it wouldn't, uh...
Wouldn't look right.
No.
It'd interfere with traffic and...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, all right. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Uh, trustee Menard?
My first thing is, I'd like to thank the village employees. They did a nice job on the sidewalks out here. Very good, and they connect everything really well. And my second thing tonight would, I'd like to make a motion to have the clerk advertise for a new administrator.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we separating the clerk for the administrator jobs?
I would say no, no. Administrator, excellent clerk. I believe we always have the administrator clerk.
It's been a long time since that was separated.
Yeah, so it'll be all together. And that's all I have for the evening.
Advertise that. Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, Thursday, myself and our son, we had a meeting with Chick Sheismeyer. She is our brokerage for our health insurance, and she's worked very hard to keep our rates low. So we have a proposal that we're working with. We're gonna try to get copies to everybody so the union can get their blessings, so we can possibly change this for January first and save the village and the union employees a lot of money for what they're paying. So it's like fire insurance, you gotta switch around every few years after a while, because your rates keep going up, so that was a good meeting on Thursday. I give you the proposal from PLM. It is a system study and a long-range capital plan. Now, the proposal's pretty intense. I haven't heard nothing back from the electric department. This was sent to me from PLM themselves. The proposal is thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Unfortunately, we don't have that much money budgeted for this project, so I'd like to go back and meet with the electric department, or have the mayor help me meet with them, and try to downscale the scope of the project. So we can just get the necessities that we need this year, and then we can budget for next year.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, would all that work be done this year, where we would need that much work?
Could everybody split that work up across two years?
With that?
If we could split that work up across two years?
Right, that's what I was thinking, because we're gonna be using them for other projects also, like, there's some pair of questions. It's a good company that if we have billing questions, we can go to them and they're supposed to help us with directions.
They would help you guys, so...
Yeah, that's why we're, we're having our own engineer on, on staff that if we have a question, then...
If you guys need something, or with our substation or whatever, they could help...
They're not really on staff, but with that, they're more on call than on staff.
Well, they're gonna be, right, they're gonna be on call. We, we're gonna have a contract with them where...
Similarize we have with the last gentleman who's out of the way.
Right, with Kirk Wilson.
Yeah, the person we can call if we have questions or issues that come on.
Except this time, instead of being an individual, it's an actual company, so if they retire, they're gonna die again.
We'll always have someone.
Yeah.
Correct.
Another project I was working on, my last meeting, I said I would get ahold of Kimberly Davis from the Clinton County Treasurer, and she sent me guidelines on property maintenance and what we're able to do. So I have a copy for you also, and for John, and I do have him today, so she was very helpful with property maintenance that we're looking into, especially on Chapman Street, and other areas. She gives us a good guideline, so...
Yeah.
Good information, that. We had a nice talking. She's very helpful.
Unfortunately, similar to when we had the whole Holland situation, you know, the county now does not reimburse villages, towns, whatever, for demolishing, or the cost incurred of demolishing buildings and things of that nature, I don't think...
Well, they do. They do, there's a dollar amount.
Okay, make a set then.
Yeah, that's why they give you the guidelines of, like, if you have property maintenance, we just trash, but there's also a section in here that has property maintenance on demolition and cleaning up the burnt buildings. So, I mean, the scale of what the Holland was, that'll probably never happen again, where they, you know, they don't wanna, they don't wanna part of it.
Right.
There's a piece of property on Champlain Street that everybody keeps asking about, the county pretty much washed their hands of it, not even on the tax roll anymore, so...
Right, there's some, there's some properties in Clinton County, from my experience, that even if they come up for taxes, the county doesn't even wanna take them.
They don't even want them.
Because of perhaps environmental issues and things like that, 'cause if the county takes it back and owns it for one day before it goes out on a tax sale... 'Cause if the county takes it back and owns it for one day, before it goes out on the tax sale, guess what? The county then is on the hook for some of that environmental cleanup.
That's, that's exactly what she explained to me today.
So they do not, I mean, and I, I could think of at least two or three off the top of my head that are like that, that the county is not even gonna touch.
Especially if it's a large commercial building, they don't wanna part of it.
Abandon gas stations that I know, that, that, they know there's contamination, that's another issue. Tom, is there any way that we could start finding this gentleman for not cleaning it up, not doing any...
Well, again, we have to... I've already sent him the letters at the end of the month. He just starts cleaning up, or he's throwing the coat on a daily. We, we can find him on a daily basis. He's been advised of it.
And one of the things... You sent him a registered letter? Looks like that's what we need. Yeah, we've done that, but I've done that a couple times too. So the next step is, I've actually drafted a, drafted like a complaint or typical violation forms that we have to use. And I just, we, I just have to talk to John, get details in there, and then file it, serve them, and go from there. But I have a, but I have a draft of the violations for not only that property, but some of these other ones that we talked about. Yeah.
At least we have a direction that we can go in. I mean, people keep asking the questions, and we have answers.
It's been, it's been way too long.
Yeah, definitely.
No question.
This week, everybody knows it's Fire Prevention Week. Uh, Friday, you'll see the fire department. There's members of us that are gonna be at the school for all day, helping the kids out, showing them all about Fire Prevention Week. So if you see the fire trucks at the elementary school, just, they're up there helping out the kids, doing little training, so... And I need an executive session to talk about a, the employment history of a particular person.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Uh, trustee Rodriguez?
Well, first I'd like to thank Dave for coming up, giving us an update and everything. Very nice. Uh, the fall cleanup days for the village are gonna be October 25th to the 29th. There'll be no more pickups after this date. Residents are reminded that the collection is for pickup of bag leaves, shrubs, tree limbs less than three inches in diameter only. There'll be no pickup of paint cans, tires, stumps, waste oil, cement, or wood. Residents are requested to bag all leaves in clear bags, only to place them on the curbside, not behind parked cars or anything like that, so the crews can pick them up. That's all I got today.
Okay.
I had one other thing on the CPR training for the track center and the electric crew. They've done that in July. And I can talk to Shannon and see who attended and stuff like that if you want me to, or whatever.
I wasn't particularly worried about attendance, but okay.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, somebody said that you wanted the attended sheet. Who attended?
Oh, no, that was, I wanted to make sure the attendance for other training, and I got that attended sheet.
Oh, okay.
I was able to file, I'm finding your files.
All right. So they're all certified?
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, other reports. I spoke with, uh, Dan Steck last week at a convention. He's gonna be coming up in the next month or so. Uh, he's trying to set it up so that there's an entire day he can tour Rouse's Point, see our facilities, and everything else, or the water plant, or the sewer plant. Does not allow for the electric to tour, before they can tour the electric department, so... See the public works garage, take Rouse off some stuff. Okay, any other reports are sent?
I'd like to report that we received our third quarter distribution of sales tax revenue today in the amount of 66,277.27. I didn't get a chance to compare it to last year at this time, but I can let you know about that. Also too, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to attend the, um, fall training school sponsored by NITOM, the State Controller's Office. As always, it was nice to go and, uh, network with our fellow colleagues and, uh, get the, find out the new regulations and stuff. And so it was, after a couple of your absence, it was nice to get back in the swing of things. That's all I have.
66,000?
277.27.
Thank you for the apartment review report. Where the money went?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other reports? Do you have anything, Cooper?
No, just that I've been dealing with David. We're trying to bring our actions up to date on that building up there.
Open meeting in the public again? Any public comments? Motion to go into a short recess for executives, so we can go to executives.
Second, yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Yep.